It was with our youngest daughter. Um, she was in fifth grade two years ago and um, she was always our first one up in the morning and you know, loved her teachers, loved school, couldn't wait to be at school every morning. And all of a sudden, like three months into that school year, just didn't want to get out of bed. I hate school. I don't want to be around my friends. And you know, it was one of those things where it's like, okay, well, what's going on?
Hello, everyone. Welcome to another episode of the Keisha King Show where we discuss faith, culture, and politics, all geared towards the next generation. As you can see, I have another in-studio guest with me today, my friend and candidate for school board, April Carney.
Hi, Keisha.
Hi, April.
I'm so glad to be in studio with you this morning. Thank you for having me.
I'm so happy that you are here.
I'm talk, I'm like doing this because of the microphone, so I'm, so it's a whole situation, everybody. So this is my friend April. She is running uh, for school board. We met like in the school board fight, you know, didn't we?
Yeah.
Is that how we met? Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just kind of being in there, going down there, talking about our kids. So why don't you tell everybody about yourself?
Well, let's see. I am a native New Yorker, but I have lived in Florida for twenty-two years now. Um, and I'm a married mother of two. I have two daughters, uh, one in middle and one in high school. And I own a small business called redo interiors. I'm an interior designer. And um, you know, just really, I've always been involved in my kids' education. We have one that um, has a learning plan, so she needs a little bit more attention. And then I have another one that's gifted and doesn't need as much attention, but maybe needs a little more motivation.
Right. They're all unique.
Yes. And so um, you know, after, I think like most parents, you know, after COVID, and we shut down, and we saw what was going on, you know, online when we were learning from home. Um, and then when we opened back up again and saw the difference in the school day with the COVID protocols and everything else, um, you know, you just become aware of what's really happening and you start to be concerned as a parent.
Yeah. Were you like, what was your, what was that thing that just like woke you up? And you were like, what the heck is going on?
It was with our youngest daughter. Um, she was in fifth grade two years ago and um, she was always our first one up in the morning and you know, loved her teachers, loved school, couldn't wait to be at school every morning. And all of a sudden, like three months into that school year, just didn't want to get out of bed. I hate school. I don't want to be around my friends. And you know, it was one of those things where it's like, okay, well, what's going on? And when we had a chance to really have a conversation with her, she was like, mommy, she's like, I can't stand wearing the mask on my face. She says, it makes my glasses fog up. Um, she said, and they're not letting me see my friends on the playground. And so um, it was at that point where I was like, wait a second, like, this is not.
This is damaging the kids.
This is, yeah, it's, it's not even, not even academically. I wasn't even worried about her academically, but socially and emotionally, it was causing problems.
Yeah.
Um, and so it was at that point that I, you know, I decided, you know, maybe I should go down to the school board. And maybe I should speak at a school board meeting and see what happens.
Yeah.
And so.
They, they messed with the wrong one when they messed with Miss April Carney, honey. Y'all don't even know. I remember um, you put together a rally for like, basically like a medical freedom rally. April put that thing together so quick and so fast, and that room was packed. And you did magnificently. You really, it was really good.
Thank you. I mean, I think that, you know, there's, parents have been silent for so long. And it wasn't until they were putting all these restrict, you know, restrictions on our children that parents were like, wait a second. Who's, who's in charge here?
Right.
You know, and um, that parental rights rally, I mean, literally myself and another mother, we organized that in three days. There were three hundred people there.
Yeah, it was incredible.
We had a panel of seven doctors. We had.
Knowledge. I mean, they could, they were just like rattling off stuff. We learned so much. We still kind of like keeping, everybody like passes their bow around and like, oh yeah, we know that guy from, from the rally.
Yeah, it's great because parents were looking for resources. And you know, who can we trust? Who can we talk to that's going to give us honest information?
Yeah. That was um, actually one of the reasons why I knew I could support you in your uh, run for school board because you get it done. That's like, you know, I, I lived in New York. I'm from Connecticut. I lived in New York. You're a New Yorker. That's not, it's like, you know, we, that's like that thing. That's what we do. It's a New Yorker.
It's so true. We're go-getters. I mean, it's, you know, if, if you can't sit around and wait for somebody to do it, you gotta just do it yourself.
That's it. That's it. Yeah. So I was, I was really impressed by that. And just your, you know, there's so many moms who have that, you know, that mama bear spirit. And you just came all in your mama bear spirit. And you was ready to take it down. And I was like, if, you know, a sensible, we need to protect our children, like stepping out and saying something when everybody else is silent, that is hard to do. But when you are messing with my kid and you are pushing things on them, that is just not okay. You dang on right, I'm going to come out clawing like a crazy person.
Yeah. And I think there's so many parents out there that are afraid of being canceled, or they're afraid of somebody getting mad at them. It's like, this is the future of our country. We need to be protecting our children. We need to be standing up for our children. Um, there's nothing I would not do for my two girls.
That's right.
I mean, you understand, we're raising daughters, you know?
Yeah. We, uh, one with a special, one with special needs child, two with a, when she was in uh, school, she had a five oh, five oh one C three. She had a um, um, IEP plan. Yeah.
Yeah. And so I mean, it's like, we need to be raising strong women that are able to stand up for themselves. And so my mom raised me that way. I'm doing the same thing with my girls.
Yeah. You know what too? Um, I think when our girls see us so protective of them and willing to like, put everything on the line for them, um, when our kids see that, I think that's, that's like a teaching moment. It's a teaching process, you know, that they're seeing like, my mom is willing to like, go the mile for me. And they, you know, I see it in my kids. They're like, they don't really want to be involved. They're like, pictures, none of that. They're like, do not include me. But I'm just like, go mom.
My aunt too. Everyone, like my seventeen-year-old, I'm really proud of you.
Yes, yes.
You know, and so um, and you know, and I'm sure you experience this too with social media now and um, me running for school board and being out in the public eye, you know, there's, she's getting a lot of backlash.
Tell me about that.
And so it's, you know, we've had, have a lot of really serious conversations about what mom stands for and what we believe as a family is true and right versus what this agenda is and this narrative is and what's being pushed. And this is how you address these situations, you know? And there's always going to be people out there that don't support what you believe in.
Right.
But you have to be able to respond respectfully.
Right.
And um, know your stuff.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we're having a lot of conversations about what's going on in the world right now. It's actually opened the door for us to really start having honest, more mature conversations.
Oh, my God, I love this.
So um, it's been, it's been great for us as a family.
I am so happy you said this. So I was thinking about, and I'm still gonna do it. I was thinking about this this morning. Um, so many parents, and you probably went through this too, like when they were getting, how old is your oldest?
Seventeen.
Okay, seventeen and.
Twelve.
Okay. So when they were getting in like, that pre-teen stage, or like you have, you're like mentally preparing yourself. You're like, okay, she's about to metamorphosize, you know, about to turn into like this crazy teenager. Right, right, exactly. And I don't know about you, but I, this whole process has brought me closer to my daughters. Like, it's so weird, seeing, them seeing me go through this and do this and stand up and all those things. And then me seeing them learn and get more confident and kind of like stop being so concerned about what people are saying about, just those normal, um, it's kind of like grown them up a little bit faster where there's, are more mature, where they are, they're just so.
It's so much more better to be around them now. Well, I don't know. Can you relate to that? You can have conversations. Like, there's nothing that's, that's, there's nothing off the table, right? Like, you can, I mean, like, for instance, I mean, my oldest will come to me and be like, have you seen this? Oh, my gosh, how could this possibly be true?
Right.
It's opening the door to critical thinking.
Yes.
Because now all of a sudden, she sees what mom's doing, but she also sees what's happening online or what she's seeing on television. And it's making her sit back and start thinking for herself.
Right.
And say, okay, well, what feels right in here? And so um, yeah, I think that it's really opened the door to, to, to begin to teach them how to think for yourself, have your own opinions, realize that you don't have to follow the herd. You just need to go with what's in your heart and what you believe to be true and right.
I love that. Um, I think that so many more parents can benefit just in your own home of like, having these discussions and really knowing like, what's going on with your kid. Because I don't think that I realized, April, like, exactly what my baby was having to go through every day, like, in the school system. Like, they have, they, there's so much pressure. It's so different from when we went to school. Like, I mean, it's just things that you just won't even think about. And then you start having these conversations and they're like, oh yeah, my teacher said this. And you're like, what? And then they're like, oh, my friend said this.
Yeah.
And you're just like, what in the world is going on? Like, where am I sending you every day? You know, and not every school is like that. And not every teacher is like that. But those teachers who do those kinds of things, who are trying to push that on these kids, I mean, it, you're already trying to figure everything out as a kid. You're, especially when you're a teenager, a, a female, like, there's just a lot. I know, you probably remember.
Oh, I know. And then they have the pressures of social media and filters. And I mean, all these things that you and I did not have, you know, it's bad enough to be in the classroom comparing yourself to another girl in the classroom that.
Now you're gonna be a bombshell.
Yeah, now all of a sudden, it's like, you know, the hair's gotta be done all the time. You can't, yeah. Um, and it's, I mean, that's the other reason why we really don't need to be having all these social ideologies and everything pushed in the school system because our kids are already under enough pressure just from dealing with puberty and hormones and figuring out who you are. This is just compiling onto the problem. And I think that's why we're, we're seeing such a surge in anxiety and depression in teens. It's very scary.
It is.
It's very, very scary. And if you don't have that reinforcement at home, and you don't have, you know, parents that are there to support you, I mean, think of those kids that are, that have, that don't have the support. So um, you know, it's really important that we really try to get back to basics and get all of these things out of the classroom because they just don't belong there.
That's so true. You know, um, I was listening to your debate um, the other day, which you did fantastic. Um, and your opponent was talking about, this is my translation, this is not a quote, but this is my translation. Teachers need to be able to satisfy every need of a child. That's kind of like what I heard. Like, a teacher is supposed to just know and be able to facilitate every single need. We gotta feed them, we gotta clothe them, we gotta feed, you know, we gotta feed the hungry and help the homeless child. You know, we got, I mean, and there is like, that, she was saying she believed that parents should be involved, but I just don't remember her putting forth anything where parents would actually be involved because everything was like, it's, it was almost like the school is a one-stop shop, and you're gonna get everything you need at the school. And I'm just like, well, where does a parent come in?
Exactly. I know. And it's, you know, there are kids and there are schools where these kids are depending on their meals to be fed, and they're depending on that hug. And that's unfortunate. And that, I feel like, is part of maybe our job to be bringing more awareness that these parents need to really be, become more involved in their, in their child's life and education. Um, but you can't, you can't say that you're for, you know, taking care of a child. Like, that's our job.
Right. Cause you don't know, you don't know enough about the child and their home environment. You just don't. And I might say, like, I agree. There are some kids that act, they need that meal, they need that, you know, they have, you know, terrible home, I understand. But at the same time, like, that's not every kid.
Right.
But you, but you're taking, they're taking this approach as if it is every kid, and they're overstepping their boundaries in so many ways. Cause most kids, the majority of kids, don't live in those situations. You know, so they're taking like, they're making the few the majority and using these far-reaching, overreaching um, solutions, if you want to even call it that. Um, but they're not really working. They're actually damaging the healthy kids.
So those protocols are already in place, like, you know, free lunches and, you know, mental health services, if they're there for you. They're already there.
Right.
If that child needs it, right? And it's the teacher's responsibility or the guidance counselor, the school's responsibility to notice what might be going on and not be going on at home. And those, I mean, those protocols have been in place for years and years and years and years. Our children have protections and support in the school system.
Yeah.
For those specific situations. So it doesn't mean that the entire population needs to have those, like, those protocols taken by every, I mean, every single student.
Yeah. She kept saying, they, these wraparound services. Do you know, it reminded, you ever heard of the life of Julia for Barack Obama? That's exact, this is, this is an agenda. Do not be fooled by these little fancy words. We have to have a wraparound. And you know, everything needs to happen at the school. Barack Obama talked about the life of Julia. Go look it up. This lady's life literally started and ended with the state. Like, she was totally on the state her entire life. Like, from kindergarten, from pre, it was like head start, all the way to death. It was like, the state will come and take care of you. These people don't know you. They don't know, you know, your, your wants, your dreams, your desires, your, you know, things that you struggle with. But the state is just gonna come in and just facilitate your entire life. It's like, no, like, I, I got this. I can do this myself. I think that robs people of their self-agency.
It robs people of ambition, I think.
True.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I come from a family where, you know, my father was the American dream. And you know, it's, every person deserves that.
Yeah.
And if you're constantly instilling that, you know, it's like, you know, Ronald Reagan said, yeah, the government, you know, I'm the government, I'm here to help, I'm here to help.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, they're there to support. They're not there to control and take over.
Right.
And so if we have, you know, a Department of Education that wants to come in and take over every aspect of a child's life, they're also taking away their ambition and their dreams.
Yeah.
Because it's taking away their ability to think for themselves.
Right. And if you can't do that, I mean, just think about that. You would never tell your own kid to depend on someone else for your success. Like, nobody would tell their kid that. You know, Johnny, I want you to go and depend on somebody else. And that's the thing that's gonna make you successful. You see, it doesn't, it doesn't apply. You can't map that logically in real life. It just sounds good. Oh, look, you just go over here and they're gonna help you and it'll be all good. No, that doesn't map out in real life.
I mean, have you ever seen somebody that tried to ride somebody else's coattails and it worked out for them?
Oh, I've seen it, honey. Oh, yes.
It usually comes back, it usually comes back around though, right? So it doesn't, it doesn't work out.
Yeah. You know, so, so tell us some of the things that you want to do when you become a school board, uh, member of District Two, District Two.
Um, so I mean, I think a big, a big thing for me right now, especially with what we have going on on the federal level in our government with inflation, we've got, our taxes are gonna be going up now. Um, I really think that a focus on fiscal responsibility with the school board is very important.
Yeah.
Um, for those of you who may not know, the city of Jacksonville actually has a smaller budget than our Duval County Public Schools.
Yes.
And they seem to manage just fine. Um, however, we have a problem. We can't pay our teachers. We can't give them a raise. There's not enough money to go around. And so I'd like to really dive in, into that and see where the money is going.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
We have, the, the school board has a two billion dollar budget, that's with a B, two billion.
Two point six is the projected for next year.
With less kids.
With less kids and less teachers.
So didn't, do I, is this right, that thirty thousand kids came out of the Duval County Public School System? Is that right? Did you hear that?
No, I think it's around eleven thousand in the past year. Um, we've lost a little over five hundred teachers. Um, and so.
Probably the good ones too. I guarantee you, it's the good ones that are leaving.
Yeah. And a lot of them, you know, it's funny, um, if you look at the statistics from the past year of the teachers that have left, the data shows that it's, it's not about the money.
What is it about?
Stress, lack of support. Um, you know, there's just, there's so much being put on the teachers.
Yes.
That doesn't have anything to do with teaching. And it goes back to my whole philosophy of bringing common sense back to public education. Because we're there, the teachers are there to teach, teach the future generation, teach them, you know, to read, be able to do math.
Yep.
Um, know the history of their country and to be able to graduate and go out and be anything that they want to be. But if we've got all these other things that are clouding that.
Yeah.
It puts so much more, it puts so much more added pressure on, on our faculty. And I, I mean, I appreciate our teachers. I have um, some very, very close friends of mine that teach here in Duval County. And you know, I've had long conversations with them and they just don't feel supported by the administration. And it's really sad.
Yeah. I remember when my youngest, um, this is like right before I pulled her out and sent her into a private school. Her, you know, she was much like your baby. She was loving school and, you know, wanted to go to school, excited to learn. And then all of a sudden, it just started going down. And so, you know, I'm going up to the school, trying to talk to the teacher. And you know, like, special needs teachers tend to have like a certain spirit with them. Like, they just, you know, it's a calling, you know? This teacher did not have that. And I was like, that was kind of like the first time I had ever dealt with a teacher that didn't have that special thing that special needs teachers have. And so I was just looking at her and I'm like, I'm sorry, do you even have children? And she was like, yes, I do. And, and she was like, the district says, this, district says that. I'm like, lady, listen, if you say the district to me one more time, don't say the district to me anymore. I don't care about the district. You know, I was, they hated me, April. And this is before I was even like, I didn't even know, this was six, seven years, probably like seven, eight years ago now. And I was just, they hated me. They would be like, Ms. King, this meeting is not gonna last this long. I'm sorry, this meeting is going to last exactly for how long I wanted to last because you work for me. I didn't know much about politics, but I knew that much. And I was just so bothered by how much these administrators and the district and all these people was looking at my child through her little portfolio. And she was nothing but a number to them. You know, and it just made me angry, you know, that they were just, she was so not important to them. She was a, it's like a line, an item number on a budget or something.
Well, and I think a lot, this, like, the system is overloaded.
Yes.
It's overloaded. And so, and a lot of these, you know, the E S E teachers, they're, they're overloaded. They can't handle the workload. And so you end up becoming a number because everyone has a support plan. Everyone has a special need and everyone, and everyone needs to be accommodated. And I'm not saying that these kids don't need to be accommodated. Obviously, I have one of them. Um, but I think we need to go take a step back and look at what really needs, what children really need the most attention.
Right.
And what children just maybe need a little bit, a little extra over here and not as much as, you know, so it's, it's um, it's definitely a tough situation. Um, and I'm hoping.
It burdens the system. Like, you have to use the resources, you have to best use the resources because resources aren't infinite. So because they are finite resources, you have to be wise with where they go.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? And so you can't give everything to everyone. You do have to make hard decisions. And as much as we want to give every child, everything that we see that is lacking, give that, you know, fulfill that need. You just can't do that.
No. And I think a lot of it falls on parents too, because they think that because there's cert, these services are provided in the school, that they can just do this. Yeah. And, you know, my, my mother-in-law is a, she's a forty-year-retired teacher. And when our daughter, we found out that we had to have her tested for her, you know, for ADHD, she's the one that said, yeah, she's the one that said to me, keep her in the public school system because they have to accommodate her. So it's state law, like, it follows her all the way through college. They have to accommodate her. And so, you know, it was a learning curve for my husband and I too, because we're like, okay, well, they're just, this is what it says on the piece of paper, and this is what they're gonna do. And at the end of the day, large class sizes, teachers trying to control the classroom because of discipline issues potentially. Um, and those accommodations don't happen. And you as a parent have to be vigilant. And you as a parent have to fight for your child every single day. You cannot depend on the system to take care of your child.
That's a fact.
So we have a two-fold problem. We have an overloaded system and we have parents that, and I, you know, do this. And, you know, it's hard, I understand, working two jobs and, you know, trying to get food on the table. And I, and I get that. But you've got to be able to carve a little bit out of that plate for your, for your child and make sure that those accommodations and the attentions being paid to your child.
Yeah. Because you know what it does? It, it's like a loop. So if you think, if you're thinking that the system is gonna take care of your kid, that creates more pressure on them to create more programs, because now we got more kids on this thing. And then the more kids you have in that program, the less parents are involved. And you know, it just.
It's a vicious cycle.
It's a vicious cycle. So you have to just stop, get the adults in the room, the ones who are willing to make the hard choices and say, maybe some of these kids just need some encouragement. Like, maybe they just need to say, you know what, Sarah, you can do this. I have confidence in you. You know, take a little, take a few minutes, but finish your test. You can do this. And when that child does it, and they see what they can accomplish on their own, the confidence goes up. Some of those issues that they have go away. They begin to be more social because now they again have more confidence. I mean, it's just, now you can create not a vicious cycle, but a positive cycle.
Absolutely. And that's, I mean, one of the things that I've been talking about the past year since I decided to run was, we have got to get parents back in the classroom. We've got to get them back in the classroom. There are so many studies that show when you have a relationship between the parent and the teacher, that that child thrives.
That's, you are so right.
And so, I mean, that's going to be something that I think that I'm really gonna be focused on, is getting out in the community, talking to our parents, getting our teachers engaged with our parents, because the teachers love it too. They love having those relationships. And COVID killed that. It got parents, we weren't allowed to come back in the school. We weren't allowed to do fall festival. We weren't allowed to do fundraises. We weren't allowed to do, sell Girl Scout cookies. I mean, we weren't allowed to do anything.
Yeah.
And so what happens is everybody gets used to not being around and go on and do something else. And then that whole relationship's been destroyed. So I think we're at a point now where that really needs to be fostered. And um, it hopefully will not only take a burden off the teachers as much, but parents will realize like, wow, if I just show up.
Yeah.
Thirty minutes, once a month, and I volunteer in the classroom, look at the impact it's having. So.
Do you, so when I was growing up, you know, parents would come into the classroom, like, and, and nobody was going to tell a parent that they couldn't come into, to the classroom. This whole notion of like, oh, parents, you're gonna be over there. My mother would have burned the school down if somebody would have told her that she could not come into the classroom. But that kept the kids on point, cause you never knew when mommy and daddy was gonna show up and just be sitting in the classroom like, yeah, we got the note. You walk in there, talking with your friend. Yeah, girl, and you look and you're like, oh my God, yes, mom is here and it's, I'm in trouble. You know, but that, that concern, that care, there's a part of you as a teenager, obviously, that hates it, or as a young person that hates it.
It's so embarrassing.
Right. But when you, it, it does you so good. It, it does, does so much good for you because you know your parents care. And you can get yourself together and you can get yourself back on track because you do have all these things coming at you, peer pressure and all this kind of stuff. And kids today haven't even got it. It's, it's just awful. But the parent being involved, like, that is some, it, it is so important. It's just so important.
Well, I think too, like, then, then a friend goes home and says, hey, you know, so and so's mom was in class today. Like, mom, why, how come you never show up?
Oh, right.
I mean, it's, you know, it can have kind of a domino effect. And we get more parents in the classroom. You know, you know, when one person stands up, you're no longer alone.
That's right. And then it's like a contagion, a good contagion, which we could use in our society.
Absolutely.
Speaking of contagions, um, we have these issues, like, our young girls are wanting to not be girls. They are tran, transitioning to boys behind the parents' backs. The, the schools are socially transitioning the children. Um, as a school, as a future school board member, what do you, how do, just tell me your personal views on it. And then just, if you can, like, what do you think you could do as a school board member to kind of quell that?
Well, as a former tomboy who played with Tonka trucks and had matchbox cars, um, and was only friends with the boys, um, I think that, you know, it's natural for our children to explore and go through, you know, different phases. Um, there was a time where I, like I said, I was playing in the dirt with the boys, had no desire to put on a dress, or, you know, play with Barbie dolls or anything like that.
But did you have a desire to be a boy?
No. I just didn't want to be girly.
Yeah.
Um, but now, I mean, you know, now I'm, I love a good handbag and some high heels. I mean, I just, you know, it's, it's, um, you know, but it's, I think that we need to let our kids' brains develop and go through the motions and let them explore and let them, you know, pursue different avenues. Different avenues, but that doesn't mean that you have to push it immediately that after they say something. My parents, you know, when I said I wanted a Tonka truck, my mom wasn't like, oh my gosh.
Right. Get her some puberty blockers.
April needs the assignment surgery. I mean, that was just like, okay, cool. You know, like, look at your truck fun. And, you know, it's, it was a phase. Think of all the hormones, especially when you're, you know, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. And all the crazy hormones that are going through your body. I think as parents and, um. Really, as a society, we need to just, it's another, it's a hands-off, let our kids be kids. Yes, let's, let's support and guide, but let's not focus on it. Um, and I think too, what's happening is a lot of these kids that are really struggling with it now have a microscope. On, over them. And so it's causing more stress and more anxiety and more like, who am I? Why, why do I feel this way? Why are they always talking about me? Why do I have a label? Why do I have a name? Why am I supposed to dress a certain way? None of that should be going on. It's sad. Like, we just need to let our kids be kids. We need to focus on this in the school. We need to focus on academics. We need to focus on. Reading.
If you cannot read, you know, it is just one of the most necessary. Things that you could have. And everybody knew that that was necessary. That is why, you know, like, in our history. There was a time that black people, when, when slavery was going on, that they, it was forbidden. It was against the law to read. So now when you have people who are not focusing on that, it's like, how dare you take away something that is so. Do you know how many people fought to get educated? You know, and now you have people that are like, well, just forget the books. Let's just do all the social stuff. And it's like. You don't get to, you don't get to say that to people. You don't get to take away. You know, all these, there are all these rights now. How come learning is not a right? How is that, why is not education a right?
You can walk out of the classroom during instruction time and go protest. That's a good. Why is that okay?
It's, it makes no sense. We're putting all of this stuff on these kids who are, you, you know, they can't even. They're not ready to deal with these heavy social issues. You know, they barely can, you know, figure out what they're gonna wear to school that day, you know, let alone. Try to figure out, you know, is my biol, does my biology match with my, however they phrase, you know, all this stuff. It's just nonsense. It is utter nonsense. And like you said, the kids that actually do have. An issue are really struggling, which is typically a very, very, very small percent of children. They don't get focused on, you know, because they probably could, would, wanna crawl in a freaking corner. Like, they probably don't even wanna talk about it.
I spoke to a mother who is, you know, her son is gay. And he's so tired of it. He just wants to be a kid. He just wants to be able to live his life, hang out with his friends and not see posters all over the walls. And it constantly being talked about and, oh, you need to come to this club and you need to go to that club and you need to get involved with this, you know, organization.
He's gotta be an activist.
Yeah, he just wants to, he just wants to hang out and be, and be a kid. It's, um, there's so much pressure on, on all the wrong things. And so, um, you know, you only get to be a child once. You only get to have that innocence and the, and, you know. Freedom to not have the responsibilities of an adult and to just be. And enjoy life. You only get that at one point in your life and it's being taken away.
Yeah, it's being stolen. It's definitely be, you know what it's like? You ever heard of like stolen valor? Like when a, a person who's never been in the military and they claim that they've done all these things, you're stealing someone's value. Like I. I liken it to the same thing when it's, it's, I mean, with a, a child. They're just trying to be. And you are taking that away and dumping all of this stuff onto them. That they don't care about. They do not care about. They're not running around like thinking about, oh, what. Bathroom am I gonna use today? Like, you put that on them. But, uh, my oldest daughter was. Asked her first week of eighth grade, what pronoun do you wanna go by? She's like, what? Like, what are you talking about? What the freak? Like, what? I'm, I'm not thinking about that. That's the teachers, not all of them. That was a teacher putting that on her.
Or the policy being put in place by the administration.
Or the policy being put in place. Yes. And, you know, people try to make it seem like. Uh, you know, these are conspiracy theories, critical race theories not being taught. People aren't pushing, you know, the sexual. Uh, agenda in schools. You know, at this point. I think the proof is in society. Like, at this point, if you still wanna say that, like, you're either woefully ignorant or you are just. A liar. Really? I mean, at this point, it's so obvious.
I saw something, I'm trying to remember where I saw it. It had been on Twitter a couple days ago. Say it, this, it's not sticking. Like, a lot of kids are saying, wait a minute. You know, this is, this is who I am and, you know, I don't need to go. Chop off body parts or take puberty blockers. Well, that's the thing, and, and that's the other thing that really drives me crazy is as a parent, as parents. We're supposed to protect our children from harm. And if you're agreeing. At, if your child's a minor and they say they wanna go do these things and you're allowing that to happen. You're physically mutilating your body and the parent is allowing that to happen? That's not. That's not protecting your child.
Yeah, I am saying, I, I do believe that that is child abuse. I don't know in what. Right mind, would we cut off perfectly healthy breasts of little girls? Why would we give perfectly healthy young boys? Basically castrate them. Why would we do that to kids? I don't understand why this is even a conversation to me, April. This is just basic. Knowledge. Like, I am all for, you know. Enlightenment, you know, knowing things. I am all for, you know, um, not. Being stuck in ignorance, you know, doing something. Just, you know, I don't, just because it's old, that doesn't mean it's good, you know, and just because it's new, that doesn't mean it's good either, you know, let's. Look at it and, and dissect it and see what happens. But. To think that it is good for children to be shown sexually explicit material? To think that it is good to cut off. Healthy body parts of children? Like, what are we even talking about? Like, why is that?
That's like saying, I don't wanna be right-handed anymore. I'm gonna chop off my right hand and just use my left hand. Right? I mean, think about that. It's, um. But it's just, it's. It goes back to common sense. We have lost our way. And I think that when your brain's fully developed and you're an adult. If you're still feeling that way, when you're an adult and you're capable of making those decisions, then that's up to you as an adult.
As an adult.
But when we can't be, I mean, we're talking about kids that still, you know, that believe in Santa Claus and the Easter Bunny. And I mean, it's not. Yeah. It's, um, to be attacking our most impressionable minds with. Gender theory, um, I just, it's just so inappropriate.
It is. And I think, you know, quiet as it's kept, but I do think you have a lot of vocal support. You are, you are standing up for what's right. You definitely are. And like, people will look back and say. Thank goodness April was there to stand up for what was right when, because people. People will latch on to that because people are desperate need of hope and they're desperate need of someone. Who has the courage to say the thing that everybody else wants to say. So I just wanna say thank you for. Standing up for kids and standing up for parents and being in the fight to take on something so heavy right now. I mean, it's not an easy thing to do is fight for, you know.
It's not. And I'm glad that you and I are in this together. And I'm, I'm so proud to know you and, um. I'm glad that we've, you know, it's, I'm glad that parents are finally speaking up and talking about what's been going on. And fighting for their kids because it is, it's the future of our country.
That's right.
And, um, you know, I'm. We are the greatest country in this world and we need to fight for it every day and that begins with our children.
That's right. I cannot say it enough. There is no other place that I would rather live. In the United States of America, especially when you travel around, you're like, ooh, I don't live there, you know, but yeah. So it, it, it is certainly important. We certainly have to keep fighting for our kids. So. Tell us where they can find you, where they can support you, donate to your campaign.
Sure. Um, so I have aprilcarney.com is the best place to go. Um, you can sign up to. You know, reach out to me. You can donate to my campaign. You can, um, if you live locally and you'd like a yard sign, you can. Have one of my sign fairies come drop one off to you. But there's more information about my platform there. I'm on Facebook and Instagram as well. And yeah, it's, uh, we're getting close. We've got thirteen days. I think a lot of people don't realize that these elections will be decided, the mo- most of them on August twenty third.
August twenty third, everybody.
It's really important. This, my, my particular race will not go to the November ballot, so it will be decided that evening.
Yes. So, uh, if you are in District Two. Uh, in Jacksonville, Florida, please make sure, for, for school boards, please make sure you vote for April Carney. Um, you will not regret it. She is a fighter and I absolutely one hundred percent support her. Thank you, April, for coming on.
Thank you so much for having me, Keisha. It's been a pleasure.
I will see you guys later. Listen, don't forget to like, comment, share this video. Please share this video and subscribe. People need to hear these conversations and the more we can get this out into the world, the more we can get this out into the community, the more minds we can change. So thank you for watching. I will see you later. Bye-bye.